Sorry for the delay, folks. We had a few items get added to our closed session. Mr. Attorney, did you want to announce out a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for the delay in getting back in here. On closed session, one item was added to closed session, item number four, prior to the meeting, which would add a closed session agenda item regarding potential exposure to litigation, one case. So as to items one through three, no reportable action was taken as to item number four. The council took action. Motion was made by Vice Mayor Thompson, second by Councilmember Smith. Vote was unanimous in the affirmative to reject a claim, claim number 2022-04. We will go ahead and send out the notice for the rejection of that claim.
Thank you. With that, we will move into open session. Will you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please? Salute, pledge.
Nation under God.
Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second?
Councilmember Hatley? Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven yeses.
I'd like to announce to the council and the public that we have a technical difficulty with our screens tonight, so every vote will be a roll call.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I also could add, at the very beginning of the meeting, right before closed session, action was taken by the council to add on open session agenda item number 10, and that item is entitled Orville Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner. It is not published on the agenda, but pursuant to Government Code 54954.2, that matter was voted on by the council to add it for consideration. So there is item number 10, which is not published on the printed agenda, but it has been added to the agenda for consideration by the council.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to presentations and proclamations. I have here a proclamation honoring Doug Riley.
Don.
Don, oh, I have Doug here, I'm sorry. All right. Is there someone here to accept this?
Jason Bouvier, I believe. Can I just say a statement about Jason? So he ran a fishing tournament organization here locally called NorCal 90 for many, many years, and since retired that, but he and Don are longtime friends. We certainly, and of course, the proclamation, I think, pretty much states it all, but just a little bit about Jason. So he's a longtime Orvillian and a big contributor to all things recreation and bass tournaments and all that. I'm sure he has a lot to say, a lot of fishing stories.
Who's that? Thank you very much, everybody on the council. I appreciate you recognizing Donald Rayly. He's been here for a very long time. He's been a member of ORAC. He started the Black Bass Action Committee for fishing in Lake Orville, and it just turned into all sorts of recreation, not just fishing. So this is a great tribute to him. He was not only my mentor, but one of my best friends, and he will be missed, and I know that he'll miss all of you, so thank you.
So his name is Riley?
Don Rayly.
Riley, okay. That's a unique name. I've never seen that before. But a proclamation honoring Don Rayly. Whereas Don Rayly has dedicated his life to the community of Orville with distinction, having served as a Chamber of Commerce representative to ORAC, DWR, state parks, and state representatives for 28 years, and as a community volunteer and advocate for fishing organizations for over 20 years. And whereas he served as head coach for the Buke County Office of Education High School Fishing Team based out of Orville, sharing his knowledge of the sport of bass fishing, fishing code of ethics, and angler participation rules. And whereas Don served as president of the Paradise Bass Club, giving freely of his time by teaching fish care and catch and release to future generations, Don also helped facilitate the purchase, maintenance, and weekly operation of the Fish Release Boat for Lake Orville from early 2000s to now, which helped facilitate hundreds of local fishing events. And whereas Don's fishing expertise and advocacy has brought great recognition to Lake Orville as an incredible fishing location for thousands of competitive and recreation anglers, and showcasing the beauty that Orville has to offer. Sorry, allergy. And whereas, through Don's efforts to bring fishing tournaments, special events, and recreational fissures to Orville, the community has received hundreds of thousands of economic dollars through lodging, visiting, eating, and fueling. And whereas, the Orville City Council recognizes and appreciates the extraordinary contributions given by Don to this community. And whereas Don will be sincerely missed by all, our community will not be the same without him. Now, therefore, I Chuck Reynolds, Mayor of the City of Orville, in concurrence with the Orville City Council, do hereby honor Don Rayly for his loyal and dedicated service to the community of Orville, and urge all citizens to join me in offering the sincere expression of appreciation for dedicating his life to service and for his love of our community.
On behalf of his wife, Kathy Rayly, thank you.
Yes, sir. Very nice. Okay, item number two, Mission Esperanza Project Presentation by Annie Terry.
There we go.
Turn it. Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, it's off? Okay, okay. That's my first technical difficulty. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the city council and the community about this project. Back in early December, I met with some city staff and a grant writer on starting to work on this project. What the plan is, is we put out a grant. It was called the Encampment Resolution Grant, in order to be able to resolve encampments in different municipalities throughout California. So we have not gotten approval as of yet for this grant. It was actually a grant the city had to apply for. It had to be applied for by either a COC or a city. So the city is actually the person, the entity that would be awarded the grant. So we, the city hired a grant writer, and we have a budget for this grant. I know you probably have heard about the tiny home village that they're trying to set up in Chico. This is a similar project. I have a number of slides to share with you today that have to do with this, and I'm not real sure how exactly this whole thing works. What am I pushing that's wrong? Okay, now it says introducing, so I think I'm getting somewhere. Okay. I'm trying to get, okay, does that work? Okay. Did I do that, or did you do that? You did that, okay. Thank you. This is my technical assistant, Jackie Glover. Anyway, Mission Esperanza, we chose the name Mission Esperanza because esperanza means hope, and this is an opportunity for hope for people who have been facing homelessness in the community of Orville. The thing that sets this apart from the project that they're working on in Chico, it's, we're basically using the same types of units. Theirs is a little bit heavy on the amount of units that they have versus staffing and services. Ours is heavier on staffing and services, and we're starting out with only 30 units. So it's kind of just a matter of where we put our budget dollars towards. Whether or not this grant is accepted, this grant cycle, we still haven't heard yet. But I wanted to give you some information about the grant in general. Basically, if you, let's just go on to the next slide. Anyway, that just says that Mission Esperanza means hope. Back in December 1st, the Rescue Mission owns the property next door to the Rescue Mission. It used to be a rental yard. It's called AGS Equipment Rental. We purchased that with some grant dollars that we received from the HEAP grant the previous year. We finally got that grant paid out, and we still owed a balance on that property of $77,000. One of our major donors that's been a contributor in this community to the mission for years, basically came in and said, "I'd like to see the mission not continue to have, to make monthly payments on this grant." So he wrote us a check, and we completely paid off the $77,000 balance on that piece of property. So now the mission owns it free and clear. The previous owner only originally carried the balance for six months at a time, so we were going to be making payments until we could work out a long-term payment plan. So it was really a blessing to the Rescue Mission that they were able to pay off the grant so quickly. If you can go on to the next slide. This is our future site of Mission Esperanza. The property is 1.9 acres, there about, and like I said, it sits adjacent to the rail yard and right next door to the Rescue Mission. This is looking out through the back of the warehouse that exists on that property, out into the backyard area, so you can kind of see the expanse of the property, if you can go on to the next slide. This is a entrance to the property that actually is off of Marion Street, next door to property belonging to the olive plant. So basically, rather than having people coming in and out, on and off the property on Lincoln Boulevard, it's a safer ingress and egress to go through Marion Street, a lot less of a traffic problem, and a lot safer for pedestrians. If you can go on to the next one. This is another view of the property from the back of the property, looking back at the warehouse from the back of the property, and facing towards the Rescue Mission. And this is just another view from farther back, so you can kind of see the expanse of the whole property that we're wanting to put this project on. This is looking from Marion Street back towards the warehouse. So basically, we would have a road that would go from Marion Street into the housing development that we're wanting to set up with these pallet shelters. And this is another view from the other side of the fence. The property adjacent to this, behind the property, from, basically from the olive plant all the way out for a long ways, belongs to the city of Orville. So the mission already owns property that's adjacent to the city of Orville, so there's a chance for possible expansion, if we can work out a deal with the city to be able to use that property as a part of this project in the future. And if you can go on to the next one. This is a picture, because this is an encampment resolution grant, we had to identify an encampment, and the city, being the entity that the grant is being applied for by, decided on the encampment that would, that they would highlight. So basically, this area is in the Myers and Lincoln Street area, the area identified in red. So that would be the target area to clear homeless folks out of that and be able to put them into housing on this property at 4248 Lincoln. Okay, so this is, this part of this slide has to do with palletshelter.com. It's the same manufacturer that the city of Chico has been purchasing their pallet shelters from as well. It's a very standardized unit. If you've seen any of the other presentations, maybe on the news or from the city of Chico, it's a very standardized unit that each one can either house four individuals or two individuals, depending on whether it's 80 square feet or 100 square feet. And if you can go on to the next slide, Jackie. This is what they look like. They're prefab buildings, kind of like the same, in fact, they are the same kind of material that RVs are made out of. They're put together, it takes about an hour to put together each unit, and they're put together basically with screws and bolts. And then if any portion of any particular unit, like the first one here is Unit 12 in this slide, if say the south wall of Unit 12 is damaged, that wall can be replaced without having to replace the entire unit. If the floor is the problem, if the door is the problem, then you can replace a section of it without having to replace the entire unit. These would increase the capacity of the Rescue Mission. If we purchased 30 units, each of them capable of housing four people, that's 3, 6, 9, 12, 120 people that we could be able to house in these types of units. This would allow for people to be able to keep their pets with them, to be able to have their own space behind a locked door with a heat, a heating unit, and a air conditioner. If you can go on to the next slide. This is what they look like on the inside. They have shelving, a heater, and an air conditioner. And egress, it's like an emergency exit down at the bottom, so that people can get out in case of an emergency. And then the front door allows them a place where they can lock their own personal items inside of there. When the unit is empty and the mattresses are taken out, you can take a garden hose and hose off the inside of the unit, dry it off with the towel like you would your RV, and it's good to go for the next person. If you can go on to the next slide now. This is another view of it that shows a two-unit, a unit with two bunk beds, and kind of the same setup with the shelving, a place for people to store their personal belongings, or clothing, all of those sort of things. They also make a number of other units for things like shower units, bathroom units, that are all the same type of material. Currently, the Rescue Mission has a two-stall shower and bathroom unit, and during COVID, we borrowed one from the city that was a three-unit bathroom and shower unit also from the city. So we do have the ability to utilize those types of facilities until we can get permanent, get EDUs and all of that stuff placed on the property. This is going to have to happen in phases. It's not something that we're going to be able to just go out there and start putting these up. It's going to require ground prep. It's going to require, we didn't put as much in this grant budget for each and every unit to cover the cost of the unit, because what I want to do is get out into the community and get people, individuals, businesses, civic groups, to help us to raise the money to purchase a portion. to purchase a portion of these units so that there actually is a community buy-in. We want people to be involved in making this a successful, a successful project in the future. So this just explains some of the things that we want to do. Basically, it would include 30 100-unit sleeping quarters for four people in each unit. We want to develop three to four dual occupancy shower units, a laundry facility on-site. Eventually, we'd like to have that in the immediate, immediately after it opens, we would be probably most likely contracting with Haven of Hope on Wheels to provide laundry and shower facilities to add to what we already will have for bathroom and shower facilities. And, but their laundry facilities would enable people to be able to do their own laundry on-site. Part of the project includes developing some RV spaces in the area that I showed you belonging to the city. We'd like to see about putting some RV spaces in there. Not that they'd all have RV hookups, but that these would be sites where people, say the police encounter someone on the streets who's sleeping overnight in a motorhome. They could say, "You know what? You can't be parked here on the street, but there is an area behind the Rescue Mission. You can stay there overnight in a lighted area with security and leave in the morning." So it enables the police to be able to redirect people. The same thing would be available for tent spaces behind the Rescue Mission. You can't camp here, but you can take your tent, pitch it behind the Rescue Mission, and then leave in the morning, come back the next night and do exactly the same thing. The current Mission building, eventually what we'd like to do is gut it, turn it into just a kitchen and dining room and gathering room area. So when we're providing things like a warming and cooling center, we have a bigger overall area that we could do that in. Part of this project includes a dog park. We want to have a dog run area so that people who have pets and are living in one of these units would be able to take their dog behind a gate, let their dog run, do their business, and clean up after their own dog in a gated area. So we even have plans for that in the future. Long-term, we'd like to look into possibly getting solar power with a generator backup. But again, this is going to be an in-phases thing, so that's not going to happen initially. It's going to be down the road. But we have big plans for this. It would greatly increase the scope of what the Rescue Mission does. It also would give us facilities that would be more of an encouragement for people to get off the streets. A good part of our budget has to do with things like case management and housing navigation, helping people to get on with their lives and find what their next step is going to be. People would stay in these units for nine to 12 months, and during that time, they would receive intensive case management. We have a good part of our budget is for that staffing and those services for people.
Annie, Councilmember Goodson has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. I guess I have several.
Okay.
One, is it faith-based? Are you going to?
We're not going to require that they attend church services. Not at all.
My first question, thank you, Annie.
Yeah.
Second question. You had, so for your, your like behavioral health resources, would that be private staffing or would you partner with the county?
What we'd like to do is have some office space. Right now, we are so lean on office space that it's crazy. It's like room closet office space. So what we'd like to do is be able to, by gutting the existing shelter, be able to provide some office space so that people from the county offices could come out and meet with clients there on-site without it, I mean, right now, there's like our multipurpose room, and there's a couple of, like I said, room closet sized offices, and that's it.
I know. I took a lovely tour.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, and then third, you had mentioned a community link, so I kind of thought about, I had been on a tour to the, in Marysville, the 14 Ford Housing Project. So there's a similarity there in regards to community investment footprint. Is that a kind of model that you're piggybacking off of?
Absolutely. What we'd like to do is get people, we want to offer naming opportunities. If you're willing to pay for half of the cost of one of these units, we could call it the Goodson House. You understand what I'm saying?
So you're?
If you're, if you own a business called Acme Paint, we can call it the Acme House.
So it's businesses and private citizens.
And private citizens and, you know, civic organizations, social clubs, whoever we can, whoever we can wrangle.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'm a wrangler.
I know you are.
Councilmember Smith has a question.
Yes.
Hi, Annie.
Hi.
So the pallet shelter, and you mentioned the RV piece as well. And as you, as you know, just doing the pit count and talking to folks, you know, that live on the street, a lot of them aren't inclined to going into that type of a service. There are a lot that are, so, but a lot have their RV. So just kind of what your thoughts are in, you know, having those two types of facilities, you know, opening coincide, because obviously, from the city's standpoint and business standpoint, would be reducing impact and just, you know, the residents as well, the impact of homeless people. So any, any thoughts on that as far as those two projects coinciding and opening together into the future? And then, and then the second piece to that is that, as your shelter does, as I understand it, and as, and as do most, that, you know, early in the morning, you have to leave, which again, comes back to, you know, impact into the community. So any thought into, with this new level of service, having like a day-use area where they don't have to leave, where they can receive, you know, some of the services that you mentioned, mental health and others?
Yes.
So that, so because, you know, as we know, that when they have to leave the Rescue Mission or any, any kind of service like that, it's pretty common. You know, and then, you know, they filter back into the community, and sometimes that can be problematic, especially if they have mental health, you know, if they're, you know, if they're dealing with stuff. So is there any thought to that?
You know, that's the idea of gutting the existing building and continuing to use it, so that we are providing meals there, we are providing a gathering area that they can come to, get out of the heat in the summertime, and get out of the rain in the wintertime. You know, we already offer those types of services, but I think bringing people in for, providing them a place to tent camp or a place to park their RV is going to cause them to be more likely to stay there and accept those services, rather than be out on the streets throughout the day. Does that, does that answer your question?
And so you're thinking about providing perhaps a day, like have a day service area?
Out of the existing shelter. Like I said, it's going to take, it's going to have to be in, in phases, because we're going to have to get everybody moved out of the other shelter before we can gut that building. But we, you know, we definitely need to repurpose it because right now, fixing it would be like putting lipstick on a pig, and I don't want to put lipstick on a pig.
So, but the long, the long-range plan?
Long-range plan would be to gut that building and repurpose it as a gathering area and kitchen. And we need a bigger kitchen anyway.
Councilmember Goodson has a question.
Okay.
So, Annie, I'm thinking of the RV component. And as you know, in South Orville, not a day goes by when we don't have a call or, because I live there, and I'm looking at the RVs that are parked that got there, but for some reason, they're now immobile. And I was actually in Sacramento this, this morning to get my, my vehicle serviced, and there's a very large area as you cross the bridge and underneath. It's just inundated with, with RVs. I would venture to say that there's a percentage that are just broke down and people are, just don't have the means. And so I believe that you will have some restrictions in place.
Absolutely.
Where they must, must be current on registration.
It must be registered.
Here, and, okay.
Yes. You know, there's always that problem. We have a broken down car right now in our parking lot, and we've put a notice on the vehicle that they have, I don't know, X number of days to move it, or we have a deal with NICS.
Should be 10 days.
I think, I think it is. I think, I don't remember looking at the notice, how many days it is. But we have a deal with NICS that if they don't come pick it up in the number of days that they have, and we've given them a couple of weeks already prior to that. But you do have those people that have no intention of coming back and...
Right, abandoned.
It absolutely happens. It happens less often with an RV than with a car. But it happens, I'd say, probably eight to 10 times a year at the Rescue Mission, somebody abandons a vehicle and we have to have it towed.
All right.
And I would, I would just keep in mind, Council, that this is private property, so this is a much easier issue to deal with than it is on public property.
Than on a public street.
Okay, that's good.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, Annie, thank you for coming and making this presentation, and I know we've all talked about this for some time. And I think one of the concepts, kind of a question to you is, you really have the Rescue Mission as its own entity now. And Mission Esperanza is actually a separate entity, but they're side by side.
Yes.
And I think that's one thing for us all to understand, that as the Rescue Mission is an emergency shelter, there are rules to run that, but then Mission Esperanza will have a little different rule base.
Absolutely.
And that way, they can handle what, what Councilman Smith was talking about. And plus, having a safe parking area is a huge deal, because we have a variety of folks living in their cars all over town in city parks and the street, and as you mentioned. And the other thing too, I think your, Mission Esperanza would have transitional housing services, plus the services needed for that troubled population. So I really see this as, everybody understand this is a concept of two, side by side, and existing operator.
Yes.
That's what I see as a beauty of this. We're not reinventing the wheel here, we're just making the wheel run better.
You know, yes, absolutely. You know, a year and a half, two years ago, we approached the city with the idea of bringing, incorporating the Rescue Mission into the city limits. And myself and my husband's thought with that was, the city was not compliant in that we didn't have zoning specifically earmarked for homeless shelters. But by bringing the Rescue Mission into the city limits, it exists now in the city already. So that makes the Mission, the City compliant, because now we have a homeless shelter inside the city. We just need to have a better homeless shelter with better facilities, because we inherited a pig that needs a lot of lipstick. So I think we're better off to just build something new, and I think this is the most economical and quickest solution out there. I do. You know, I think economy-wise and the length of time it will take to put this together is a lot less than building something out of brick and mortar that's going to take a long time to...
Yeah. Thank you.
Could we go on to the next slide? I'm trying to go through this quickly.
Councilmember Smith had a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll reserve to when you're, when you're complete.
Okay.
When you're done.
So this is just a few things that I wanted to highlight. Leveling grading and the road base would probably be in the area of $85,000. The sleeping quarters for 30 of these units would be about $330,000. Electrical is about $60,000. The laundry facilities would be in the future, the bathroom units would be in the future. And the solar power and generator backup, again, is something we're looking at, you know, far into the future, just to make it more economical to run. If we could go on to the next slide. The nice things about this are that it's family accessible, it's handicap accessible. We had a client that we've been, we kept sending them back and forth to the hospital and the Mission, the hospital and the Mission, because of the fact that his disabilities made it very difficult for him to be at the Rescue Mission, because our men's shelter bathrooms are not accessible, our trailer outside is. So the only way for this guy to use the restroom by himself without aid was for him to go through the parking lot to get to the trailer, you know? And it's, it's a good temporary fix, but we need something that's handicap accessible in the future. This would be pet-friendly, it would require site managers and caseworkers, and it would increase our staff astronomically, but that's a good thing. Right now, I have one case manager for about 70 clients and one intake coordinator for about 70 clients. So it's a lot of people to, for two people to manage and oversee. It would also provide access for behavioral health and other agencies to be able to meet with clients on-site. So we're looking for community help for a business buy-in and for people even to consider sponsoring maybe maintenance and upkeep on one unit for, so we're looking at down the future, you know? Can we get somebody to just pay for the maintenance and upkeep in the future on one unit? You know, that sort of thing. If we can go on to the next slide, Jackie. I'm trying to be short, I'm sorry.
It's not a short topic.
You're fine.
I'm not one of those people, I can't like stand here and read my notes, because I'm not a note reader. I fly by the seat of my pants. So anyway, that, is that my last slide? Do I have any other slides after that?
Councilmember Smith.
Okay.
Okay. Here's your chance.
So I'm glad I waited, because the buy-in piece is absolutely so critical. And just to offer a couple of thoughts, because, you know, we're, it's a partnership. And as you know, several years ago, the city, you know, we were all, I think, cooperatively working together to help facilitate the Mission and the good work that you do. The fear, I think, in the community is, you know, when we look at some of our sister cities and we see some of the errors, perhaps, at this point, it looks like that anyway, you know, the hammer, using the hammer and what happened there. And I think, to plainly speak, you know, Chico employed, deployed the hammer, and it got them in a, you know, a lot of mess, right? A lot of legal mess. And we don't want that. What we want is, we want a good, well-groomed cooperative program in our community where we're effective changing, helping people that have fallen on bad times, and at the same time mitigating impacts in our community and on our businesses. And so I think that where we have open discussion, things like this are really, really good. So, you know, moving forward as this gets implemented, you know, how, how is what you're going, what you're proposing going to minimize impacts on our community? How is that going to empower law enforcement? How is that going to reduce or prevent tent cities from popping up on our levy? You know, and where the community really has that trust and that full buy-in, to know that as they sponsor you, support what you do, that then it's, it's good for everyone. It's a win-win. And so I think to the, to the degree that you, that you do that and are successful in communicating that message and providing that service, I think that, man, the sky's the limit on, on how much help you'll get from the business community and from private sector and all of that. But I think, again, it's good communication, it's, you know, give and take, you know, all of those pieces moving together, communicating well with the city, law enforcement, you know, the health, mental health, and all, and then, and just step by step as we move along. And so if, if we deploy a pallet shelter, because right, right away, I'm telling you what, half the folks in Orville, when they hear the word pallet shelter and they're watching the news, you know, terror is inflicted in their heart. You know, so just because, you know, there's been a lot of positive press, but a lot of negative press with that. I just, I just, I guess I'm saying this to say that incrementally, as you move along this process, to get that buy-in, there's good communication, and how this is going to help, and how this is going to provide tools to the city to, you know, to law enforcement and to our code enforcement, and, and why this is, and when we get done with this, this is going to provide a cleaner, better managed city, and we don't have those impacts in our parks and levees, and, and that's the goal. I think that's everyone's, that's what we want. And, but we don't want to make the errors or the mistakes like we've seen other cities make, not, not, not because they wanted to, but just, you know, overstepping or whatever. So anyway... So anyway, I just leave you with that thought and maybe have a couple of words to that.
You know, I think, you know, the city of Oroville, as far as Chico goes, the city of Oroville is that horse of a different color that you've all heard us talking about. You know, we're not Chico. I think the city of Oroville is more inclined to help people to help themselves and less enabling. I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. I think you have to offer people some creature comforts, like air conditioning and heat and the ability to address some of those things that have kept some people from the rescue mission in the past. There are always going to be rules. Anywhere you go in life, there are going to be rules, and you're going to have to follow rules. This is the way orderly societies work. But if you address the problems of people needing to be able to keep their pets, sometimes their pets is the only thing that they have to cling to. You have to be able to provide things that are those creature comforts, so they begin to realize that, you know what, my life is better here than it was on the streets. You know, I think as you begin to see people moving out of the streets and out of encampments and into a more permanent, be it transitional, setting, we're going to see as a community that people are going to move through that program and into the next phase of their life, which is really what we want to see them do. We want to empower people to make the changes they need to make in their life.
And if I could, just, what this does for the city is, you know, I agree with Annie on, you know, providing a sufficient or adequate environment for people to reside in while they move through these issues. But this also allows the city now to move away from a shelter crisis. This is a critical component that you have for that, which in turn allows your law enforcement to enforce different laws and to move people off of public spaces. Right now, as long as you have a declared shelter crisis, you know, because of the Martin v. Idaho decision, we are, you know, a little bit, our hands are tied to a degree. So this is a careful component. This council has worked its way very carefully and methodically through a process to assist the homeless in our community without enabling the homeless. One of the programs you have is a program called City Works, where you're actually employing homeless people through the Hope Center to do cleanups throughout the city. So we're trying to help people through work transition from that lifestyle to a different lifestyle, one that would be more traditionally accepted. So we do have those programs, and we are methodically adding those. You provided a navigator a couple of weeks ago to meet people where they're at, to take them to where we think they should be. So there, you know, there's a lot of tools here. This is one of the biggest and probably the last component that we need so that we can get rid of that declared shelter crisis, and we can move people more effectively out of public spaces, like off of the levee, off of the sidewalks in front of stores and things like that. Because we will have beds available, we will have pallet shelters available. I think where our sister city or our neighbor misstepped was, you know, they didn't have that tool in place before they tried to do the other part of moving people. And then they ended up with a very difficult situation that they're trying to deal with. We don't want to get ourselves into that situation. So we're trying to be proactive. This is a collaborative effort between the city, the rescue mission, and the county. So we are all working on this together. We are providing a multitude of services in one location. This provides the outdoor camping, the car camping, the indoor communal living, and also the pallet shelters. So no, during the day, as far as the pallet shelters and things like that, they aren't going to be put out. That's their home. I mean, they're going to be living there. Communal living, where they'll do it in the, like is traditionally being done right now, yes, they probably will have to leave the facility unless there's other things onsite for them to have to deal with. This is going to require partnership through other homeless service providers, too, as far as Haven of Hope and things like, you know, because they have the ability to bring in a trailer where people can shower, do their laundry, and they also provide other services, too. So this will be a collaborative effort between all of those things. The reason why this location was selected is, one is, is the rescue mission's already there and they acquired the property. But the other one is, is that I think we'll avoid a lot of NIMBY issues.
Yes.
Because the, for lack of a better term, the condition already exists there. So we're not adding a new component to any neighborhood or anything like that. We're just expanding what's there and trying to make the rough situation better. So this is, like I say, is a large collaborative effort. We're trying to include everyone in this. And I thank Annie and, you know, Annie and Steve, this was, we worked with them quite a bit on this. So, and we're really hopeful, got our fingers crossed, and hope we can get this first phase moving.
And also, if I could just add one thing real quick. The governor has included in his next budget around two of this same encampment resolution funding. So if we don't get funded this time, us as an organization, the rescue mission is willing to keep trying, we just need everybody who's a partner to maintain that same attitude. We're just going to keep trying until we get it through.
And if we do get funded, we're going to go back and see if we can get Phase Two funded. I mean, we're going to keep pushing.
Right. We're happy.
Vice Mayor Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Annie. Thank you for everything that you do with the mission. I think you guys do a really good job out there.
Thank you.
Just my question is in regards to the costs for the pallet structures. Just want to clarify. It looked like 11,000 per unit?
With everything, including the air conditioning unit and all the stuff to put together, it takes about an hour to put one together. And it costs about 15,000 apiece by the time it has all of those components. By the time you buy the, you know, the bunk, mattresses, down to all that stuff, it's about 15,000.
Wow.
Yeah.
It just seems a little pricey. It's like 150 per square foot.
Well, and it is pricey, but part of that is because you're absolutely, you're, the ones like at 14 Forward in Marysville don't have air conditioning and heat and all that stuff. People are a lot more inclined to stay in a unit where they actually have some of those creature comforts that we all take for granted. So, yeah, they're not cheap, but it's a more economical solution than building a whole new shelter. Any other questions?
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, Annie, just to give us an idea of the capacity of the shelter now and your typical nighttime population, what kind of numbers are we seeing now? I know it goes up and down.
I have bunks for 24 men, and I have bunks for 10 women, and I have two rooms for mothers with children, with a total of five beds. I am typically running about, during good weather, I'm running about 45 in the men's shelter to 50. And I'm at capacity in the women's shelter. Once in a while, I have to, you know, put some bunks out that I'm not supposed to.
So the need is there.
The need is there. The need is definitely there. We could, yeah, we could use a bigger facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Annie, thank you so much. I really admire your vision and looking forward to moving forward together.
Our goal has always been to leave the rescue mission in a better place than it was when we came to work there, and that's still our goal, you know? I want to see, I want to see people's needs met, but I want to see the community as a whole's needs met as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public speaker on this presentation.
Okay.
Bill Spear.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I want to also thank Annie and the rescue mission for their hard work and dedication. They would be serving the homeless if nobody helped at all, they would still be there doing it. It's in their heart to do it. And when somebody's heart's in something, they do a lot better job. And I'm thankful to the city for helping them, for the donation and expanding what they're already doing. And they have a lot of, already, as Bill was talking about, the city and the county working together with them. But they also have the community who knows what they're doing and trusts them and the work they do there. They do the work nobody else wants to do. They have the Hope Center and Haven of Hope on Wills. We support them, and I know a lot of the other faith community supports them. And this vision is really awesome, and I think that the more people that get behind it and get a little wind to it, we can really make a great impact. Everything's perfect, the location's there, we have the people, their hearts are in it to do it. And if we just get a little bit of wind in the cell, you know, everyone wants to complain, yeah, we got the homeless here and the homeless there, that's like the biggest complaint. But here's an opportunity to get some momentum going and make this vision come true. It don't have to be a big drawn-out, you're-face thing. If we really get behind it as a community, we could make this happen. If we get their grant to go through or some private people to buy into it, to see it's going to make our whole community better. And so I just completely support them. I am so grateful and thankful for them, 100% behind them, and I'm thankful that our city's looking that way and helping out. And I would encourage us to not waste the opportunity and to do whatever we can to make this work faster and better. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is the only speaker on this item.
This time, we're going to move on to public communication. This is a time for the public to communicate with us for items that are not on the agenda.
Our first speaker is the cameraman.
Good evening, Oroville City Council. A great presentation. I must say, $15,000 unit, that is certainly a lot less cheaper than building a new house in this economy. I was hoping tonight to say, finally, I've gotten these records that I've been waiting for, but still, I have not gotten the records. I know we spoke last meeting, just still haven't gotten them. I did, and just correct, I'm calling the number and it gives me a voicemail to an office in Ontario. That is your correct number, right? Okay, so I just want to make sure that I am doing my due diligence and reaching out. Yeah, so there's that. Today is also International Police Brutal, Against Police Brutality Day, for those who didn't know. You know, I don't hear really any cases, really. I mean, there's some bad apples here and there, but I can say for sure, I haven't heard any, like, severe beatings out of Oroville. So, you know, that's, that's good. You know, there may be some confusion in not knowing the law, per se, to, you know, I mean, we've got to go, if you actually read the vehicle code or the penal code, you know, books are this thick, you know? I don't expect everybody to know everything sometimes. But today, before this meeting, I happened to hear a call come out for a gentleman that was filming at the treasurer's office at the Butte County, you know, the main administration building. Now, for first thought was, wow, it's not me for once that's actually filming, we've got someone actually exercising their rights. But what came after that was that the dispatcher relayed that the district attorney's investigators people, you know, they have their own little police force of investigators that come and talk to you, even though they call Oroville Police, because for most that don't know, that county building is city property. I've had conversations, look, if you get your car broken into, even though it's the sheriff's department parking lot, you got to call Oroville, because it's within the city limits. I think that's a little bit ridiculous, but that's a story for another day. They wanted the footage confiscated that this guy was filming, and I'm like, you can't do that, that's 148G protected. So I guess Oroville showed up. I couldn't really run from City Hall to the county building and be back in time for the meeting, but it sounded like they respected the gentleman's right to record, and there was no incident, because I heard the officer was 10-8, not 10-15. So that's good to hear. So I'm glad that we're understanding that public photography is a constitutionally protected right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Spear.
I'd like to pray for you all this evening. Lord, we thank you for today, thank you for all the people gathered here, thank you for our city council, and we pray for wisdom from heaven, that you would open up the floodgates and guide us and direct us through the things that you've given us to be stewards over, to be good stewards, to make a way for the homeless, to help the rescue mission, to make our city prosper and raise our kids up in safe environments, to be good role models. And we thank you that with you, we can do all things. We pray for our world, for the people in Ukraine. We pray your mercy and your grace upon them, and we thank you that you are always there, even in the valley, even in the struggle, you are there. So continue to bless our city, continue to protect us, continue to use us. Let Oroville be a city on a hill, a light on a shelf. Let us be an example of policies that do work, of a blessed city. We love you, we thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Mr. Mayor, that is the last of the public speakers for non-agenda items.
Okay, with that, we will close public communication. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hatley?
Councilmember Riggs? Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, moving on to regular business. Item number seven, city representative to serve as the abandoned vehicle abatement service authority.
Mr. Belsa, were you able to cut this down from 1,000 slides?
What you have in for consideration in front of you tonight, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll start off with that. But the council considered appointing the code enforcement director, code enforcement technicians, to serve on the abandoned vehicle abatement service authority. It's a joint powers agreement between the county, Paradise, Gridley, and Chico. And what it does is assess a dollar per vehicle for registration to offset the cost for the abandoned vehicle abatement program. Every 10 years, this comes up. This was last up in July of 2012. And what it'll do is it'll go on to the measure, there'll be a measure in November 8th of 2022 that'll go out to the voters to agree to keep the AVA program.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one public speaker, Dee Hunter.
And could I just add for clarity, just, it's not going to go specifically out to the voters of the citizens of, or the city of Oroville, this is a statewide initiative.
Sure.
Years ago, I was on a commission task force, and it was for the supervisor of the county, District One. I can't remember his name, it started with Bob, but I can't remember, it was before Bill Connolly. So, do you remember it, Jack? And so I was on one of his task forces. And we were having a real problem with abandoned vehicles in Southside. And so one of the county attorneys and I got together, and he's no longer a county attorney, he's in private practice now. But he and I wrote an ordinance, and every license that was bought in Butte County, after that, there was a dollar charged to go into this fund, because at the time, the tow companies were having to do it just as a community service, but they weren't getting paid, and it just was really a hardship on them. So we set up this fund and to pay the tow companies, so that they, they would come in, and the streets were absolutely clogged in Southside for a time. So the tow companies came in, because then we were able to pay them. Well, since then, I don't know what's happened to that fund, but it's, but that fund is there. And we made in the ordinance that it could not go into the state treasury, because at that time, the state was snatching county funds. Whenever they saw the county had a little money, they'd take it and put it into the state fund. So at any rate, that fund must still be there, and by now, it must be very big. And so if you are in need of funds, my suggestion is go back and find that fund, because I don't know where it is now. But that money was collected, has been collected, every time somebody bought a license plate, paid for a license plate in this county, a dollar was taken and put into that fund, just for, just for your information, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, that is the money that's used for the abandoned vehicle program at this time. So those funds, thank you for that work that you did, that greatly assists us at this time, we really appreciate that. But that, those dollars are used currently for that.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yeah, thank you. I certainly appreciate this, and thank you to the lady that came up and spoke. I have a question about the fund currently. So the money comes from the state to the county. The county has a committee, and then it's dispersed to cities based upon what process?
So it's just a percentage goes out. So they examine how many abandoned vehicles that you abate, and based on the number of vehicles you abate, you get a certain percentage of the funding to offset the cost.
And so does that offset cost reimburse the tow truck companies, or the dismantler, or who?
We, we will pay, and it goes to the tow, the tow companies.
Tow companies, okay. And then the tow companies are picked out on what kind of a basis? A random?
So we, we put out a contract, the AVA contract, which is going to come up again in July of this year, and it'll go out for bid, and then whatever tow company bids ends up with the contract.
And then the tow companies, are they available 24 hours a day, or daytime, nighttime?
So with abandoned vehicle abatement program, what we do is we locate vehicles, and it just depends strictly on the condition of the vehicle. If it's something that's stripped on a roadway, that needs to be immediately towed, basically following policy and procedure that everybody that has an interest in that vehicle has to get a certified letter, whether it be the property owner, the registered owner, or the legal owner. And once those letters are sent out, then they have a time period, which is 10 days upon receipt of the certified mail, to show interest in the vehicle. If they don't, then it's towed. Vehicles that we tow immediately from the roadway that are hazardous, that are accessible to the public, they are held at the tow yard, and we pay a storage fee for that, which also comes out of the AVA fund.
I know many business operators that have parking lots and have had vehicles left on their parking lots, and that's essentially private property. Is that the same process, or is it something different?
So we have an ordinance in place that says that we can tow from private or public property. If it's an abandoned vehicle, that is a public hazard, that's inoperable, then we can tow, and we do tow from private property, not just public property, not business properties, but also residential properties.
Thank you.
Just Councilman Pittman, for clarity on that, it's not a vehicle that's been parked that is operational, that's in your drive, that's in your parking lot, you just don't want it there. I mean, that is a whole nother matter. This has to be something that's obviously not functioning, out of warrant or registration, and is obviously an abandoned vehicle where we can utilize that process.
I just want to have the discussion because I know many restaurants in town have had that situation, where someone just abandons a vehicle in their parking lot, whether it works or not, and they just didn't want it anymore.
And we do, we do have other ordinances in place. There's signage that can go on parking lots to say we can enforce CBC sections, so we can enforce our 72-hour parking and expired over six months. So any vehicles expired over six months on a roadway, or in a parking lot that is with proper signage, we can go in and tow that as well. That will not go under the AVA fund. That just goes under a tow.
Thank you. I just want to have that conversation so the restaurant owners can, you know, deal with it.
We get a lot of calls.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
I do, too.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there anyone else? Having no one looking for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 9039.
Someone.
Okay, who was the first? Hatley? Okay. Councilmember Hatley?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Moving on to item number eight, Housing Successor Agency Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor Reynolds and Councilmembers. I'm going to introduce Wesley Smith with our consultant, RSG, who's going to present items number eight and nine. He's on Zoom.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair, members of the council. My name is Wesley Smith with RSG Inc. I'm sitting in, in replacement for Rosa Romero, who's been primarily working with the city. But I did work with the city of Oroville on the APR about two years ago. I also currently work with the city on your continuing disclosure report for your successor agency bonds. Health and Safety Code, Section 34176, requires the housing successor to prepare an annual report documenting compliance with expenditure proportionality and other requirements pertaining to the previously called Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, which is just now referred to as the Housing Asset Fund. The report is due annually to the Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st. This report reports on fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. And I'll just get right into some of the summary statistics. The assets reported on this report include real properties, personal property, low and mod income housing fund encumbrances, loans and grants receivable, and rents and operations, including deferrals. As of June 30th, 2021, the Housing Asset Fund had a cash balance of 3.1 million and a total portfolio value, which includes all the assets, of 7.4 million. Most of the asset values from loans receivable that are due to the housing successor. The housing successor received in fiscal year 2021, $951,996 in revenues, which includes interest income, leases, loan payments, and other miscellaneous revenues. The expenditures for the year equated to about $126,709 in funds expended. Property disposition, upon dissolution of redevelopment, the agency transferred 19 real properties and associated rental income to the housing successor. Since that time, which was, I believe, in 2011, 2012, six additional real properties were taken back by the housing successor because the loans defaulted and resulted in foreclosure. Outstanding inclusionary, I'm going to skip ahead to income and age proportionality. If housing successors expend money on projects, state law requires at least 30% to be spent on extremely low-income rental housing in a five-year period, among other restrictions. Additionally, state law sets a 20% maximum on assisting 60% to 80% AMI units. State law also sets a limit of 50% on the proportion of publicly assisted deed restricted housing that may be restricted to seniors. During fiscal year 2021, the housing successor did not spend any funds on projects and is therefore in compliance with these requirements. Finally, well, I guess, second to last is the excess surplus, which is basically the difference between the housing assets previous four years, or housing asset funds previous four-year deposits, less any encumbrances. Currently, the Housing Asset Fund has a cash balance of 2.2 million. The sum of the deposits in the prior four years is 2.3 million. As a result, the amounts reported did not accumulate in excess surplus during the fiscal year 2021 period. And finally, at the homeownership unit inventory, the housing successor oversees currently 123 homeownership units with affordability restrictions. Their recommendation today is to receive and file the report, which is, which again, is due by April 1st. And I can take any questions you have, but I must note that, again, I am filling in for our main staff, Rosa, and can get back to you on any questions that I may not be able to answer currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public speakers on this item.
It appears Councilmember Smith wishes to comment.
Yeah, just a, and you may not be able to answer this, maybe Mr. Legron can answer this, but looking at this report, page eight, under homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, it looks like there's up to $250,000 a year available for those types of services, just thinking about our presentation. And as a, as a future discussion, wouldn't have to go into the depth, but just, could that possibly be used to help with that? I think you know where I'm going.
Yes, it could be. I have not researched into just how we would do that, but RSG would definitely help us through that process. It's something that we can look into.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? This is informational only, isn't it? Or do you want us to vote on this?
You can turn on my microphone, too. I don't believe the vote is necessary on this, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's just the council has to acknowledge and receive and file this information.
Is it the consensus of this council to acknowledge and file this report?
Yes.
Yes.
I do want to say one more thing. This is the fund that we actually use to provide the loans for the Prospect View apartment of $1 million, and the loan for the Veterans Village of 1.75. So the funds are restricted to extremely low and very low, with the smallest percentage of low, and this is exactly those projects are what this fund is used for.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Moving on to item number eight, Annual Progress Report.
Good evening, Chair and members of the council again. Wesley Smith, again, I'm reporting on, this time, the Annual Progress Report. I'll just get right into it. State law requires cities to submit a housing element annual progress report to the State Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st, same as the housing successor report. The city and RSG have prepared the 2021 APR to present to council, which I believe also is a receive and file, so there won't be a vote required on this one either. Just as a notice failure, just submitting an APR within 60 days of the April 1st due date could result in court orders to compel compliance and court sanctions if not completed as ordered. HCD uses APR data to determine if the locality has not issued enough building permits to satisfy its regional housing needs, allocation, or arena by income category for reporting period, subjecting it to SB 3, SB 35 streamlining provisions until the next reporting period. In 2021, APR, in the 2021 APR, Tables A and A2 summarize housing development activity for the 2021 calendar year, as opposed to the fiscal year. So this is January 1st to December 31st. The city had six housing applications that were submitted, proposing a total of 249 units. As for building permits issued, there was 123 for 608 housing units. This is significant because in prior years, the city has averaged between as high as 71 in 2014 to a low of 3 in 2017, which shows significant progress in the calendar year 2021 of 608. The remaining need for, for the city is 962 units, and that goes from, stretches from very low to low, moderate, and above moderate income housing. And this is for the 2014 to 2023 plan cycle. As for Table C, this describes sites rezoned to accommodate a shortfall in housing need in addition to those identified in the city's housing element. The city's 2014 to 2023 housing element included Appendix B, a residential land inventory, which identified land and vacant residential sites available to accommodate arena allocation of 1793 housing units. 3,139 vacant sites were identified in Appendix B, which is adequate to fulfill the arena allocation. No additional sites have been rezoned at this time. The city will also be required to report on whether additional sites were rezoned to meet a new no net loss requirement. If the city approves development on a site identified to accommodate arena need in the housing element at a lower density or different income level than identified, the city needs to make a written finding that the need can be met by other sites identified in the housing element, or identify and make available other sites to accommodate the need within 180 days. City staff and RSG are currently analyzing development on vacant sites to report on in future APRs to meet these, these arena needs. And final few tables, let's see, I think that's about it for what I have. If you guys have any questions, I can, I can take them and try to answer them, or report back on any that I can't answer currently.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to comment?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public speakers on this item.
Councilmember Goodson?
Okay, so, I don't have total recall. So you're going to help me out with this bill?
I will try.
I think in the year 2015, we were lacking approximately 1,864 units.
Somewhere in that area.
Somewhere in that area. And so what I heard the gentleman say, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not good at names.
Mr. Smith?
You would remember, that we are now at a 962 units, is, that's what you said. Do you have a breakdown of that? Is it elderly, affordable, high-end veterans?
I'm not sure of that, the type breakdown, but I do have a breakdown, I believe it's in the staff reports, if you guys have it, of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. But I do not have a breakdown currently of if it's senior or veterans, or what, what type specifically of the housing.
Our allocation that's remaining, it's not broken down by senior or anything like that. It's just based by income category, which is low, very low, moderate, and above moderate.
And where the areas that we're doing very good in right now is the very low and the low. And the reason for that is, is there's been a lot of disaster dollars that's been pushed into the county because of the fire in Paradise. The areas where we're really struggling, or, well, the area that we have made no progress in is our moderate. We needed 308 in 2014, and in 2021, we need 308. So we have made no progress in there. But our above moderate, interestingly enough, has really taken off. You know, astronomically, if you look at what it was doing in, and let's just go back for convenience sake to 2016, one was built. Now, in 2019 and 2020, and 2021, there's been, it's been on the uptick of 56 in 2019, 51 in 2020, and 105 in 2021. So we are making progress in those areas. I mean, we're doing really well in the low to, low and very low. And I know there is some question in our community about why are we building so much? Well, that has come in because the dollars have been made available by the feds and by the state to build those projects. We're also required to build those projects. So this is, you know, we're not, city staff or this council is not solely focused at low income or very low, or things like that, or affordable. It's just, that's what's been available right now, so that's what we're taking advantage of, why those dollars exist. We're also trying to come up with ways and strategies to encourage above moderate and moderate, because we see the need for that, too, for the transitional living that people will do when they go from their affordably-based apartment to their first home. So we are working with those, and both of these programs help with that.
So when you say required, that's a requirement handed down from the state, and would we potentially lose state funding if we do not adhere?
I'm not sure what the consequence would be. I imagine that we wouldn't be eligible for any more dollars through HCD if we didn't utilize the ones that we had. But I know that one of the reports, and I'm sorry, I just, I don't recall, but we would have been reported to somebody for not complying with necessity.
Attorney General.
Yeah, to the Attorney General, to, if we weren't in compliance with this. And I imagine that they would enforce compliance upon us and probably step in and help us if we weren't cooperative at all.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Amy.
Councilmember Smith?
Mr. Legron, Whitten, the Ready Creek project cut almost in half the moderate-rate housing requirement, I think, the 96. I'm just coming off the top of my head.
I don't know if it's going to be, I don't think that'll be considered. That'll be above moderate. I mean, so we'll still be going at that, because I believe where the leaps and bounds were made here is in the Link Side and the, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the other, the one on the corner of Larkin and Ordam.
Vista Delor, what it was.
Yeah, yeah, where that one was built on. I believe that's where the significant progress was made. So those are obviously being categorized as above moderate.
Okay, and my question, and I don't know if Mr. Smith, maybe you can answer this, Amy, but when it comes to public communication with the availability of these projects as they become available to the public for renting, it would be great to have a list compiled. I don't know where we are on that, because my office receives almost, you know, weekly inquiries about that. So it'd be great to be able to direct them to a nice, well-put-together list. It would be wonderful.
We will have it on our website, and we'll have it available in our department as soon as they start leasing. I've been in contact with all the developers to let them know that we're receiving a lot of inquiry, and they're supposed to be getting their property managers to contact me so that we can start with, let alert people know what the application process will be.
And just as a request, I know, I mean, we got forgotten after this, but if it's in a printable format on our website?
Okay.
Because I'll print it out for folks and give it to them, you know, for free. We'll just do that as a service to the community. Because a lot of times, folks in that situation, you know, they don't always have access to, you know, electronics and that type of thing.
Yes.
I think there's also some other developments that are going to be in play besides the Ready Creek one here in the near future, that are really going to probably, you know, put us a long way away into meeting our above moderate needs. I mean, our moderate one is the one we're going to have to look at and see what is that area that we're missing. area that we're missing, because we have, like I said, in, what is it, seven, almost well, seven years, we've made zero progress. And I don't know how that can be when we have, so obviously, we're missing the mark. There's some piece of the housing thing that we need to work on. I mean, and that has, since Amy has recently been appointed as a director now, a department head, we'll put her, task her with that, to find out why are we missing that mark completely.
I do want to also remind you that we're in the middle of updating our housing element to the seventh cycle, so we do have new arena numbers that we are assigned, and they've actually gone down quite a bit this year. So we are required to submit the new upgrade by June to the state, and we have a lot of new policies that are required in this process, so those will be coming to council also. But if you're interested in the new arena numbers, I can give those to you. Very low, there is 171, low is 6, moderate 73, above moderate is 375, and our total allocation is 625. So with the new developments that are coming in, both the low and very low, and also Ready Creek, we should be doing very well in our numbers.
Right, right.
Great. Okay, if there are no more comments or questions, is it the consensus of this council to receive and file the housing element annual progress report for 2021? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a item number 10, Mr. Legron.
This time I'd ask.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Councilperson Smith to leave the room and recuse himself from the item, because of, he is the CEO of the chamber and cannot participate in, or should not participate in this type of decision.
What the council has before it this evening, Mr. Mayor, to consider is whether or not the city should sponsor a table at the annual Orville Chamber of Commerce Dinner. This is something that's conducted every year. If the council chooses to do this, you'll be supporting the chamber, which supports small businesses in our, well, all businesses in our community. The cost for the table is $450. The dinner will be held at the Feather Falls Casino on the 31st of March at 6:00 PM. The table will accommodate up to eight people. It is going to be an event where the chamber has presentations by the Orville Chamber and members of the business community. The reason why this is being brought to the council is that in 2016, there was a change to the business expenses and conference meeting, training and travel policy of the city of Orville. That change included, I'm just going to paraphrase, you know, here real quickly, is that any of these types of events have to have council approval. So in order for the city to sponsor this event, we need to have your approval. The funding for this will come from the mayor's budget, the mayor is, as along with the council, is each appropriated a certain number of dollars each year for training and travel. Currently, the mayor has expended out of his, to pay for his League of Cities membership, has been the only expenditure out of it, $1,000. He was allocated into that fund $3,400 for any other training and travel and necessary expenditures over the course of the year, so there's $2,400 available in that fund at this time. So we would be paying for that, just utilizing that particular fund.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, do not have any public speakers on this item.
Councilmember Goodson.
I'm looking for the number.
So it's my understanding that the table will include seating and dinner for eight? And the last time I checked, I'm not a mathematician, but there's seven of us on this dais, and times two.
We could, if the council would like, I'm asking for one, I have, I can buy two if the council would like, if everyone plans on attending. In the past, we've bought one, but whatever the council would like to do, if you'd like to do two, we can do two. Because with a council member and a spouse, that's 14, so.
14.
So I understand what you're saying, so if the council would like to do that, we can certainly do that. There is funding available in that fund. I was just trying to find that number, I was trying to anticipate your question, and I thought you were gonna ask me what was the, for the whole council. We've allocated 13,200 for the rest of the council for training and travel and things like that, and we've paid your League of City dues out of that, and any other expenditures around that training and travel out of that fund. So I don't have the balance in front of me tonight, but I do know that there are dollars that are available for those types of activities, should the council choose to do something like this. You know, it is completely up to you, if you'd like to buy one, we can buy one, if you'd like to buy two, we can buy two, if you'd like to buy zero, you know, that is the council's choice. Provided it's available. The reason why this came late to the council is because that this is, this event is on March 31st, and we do not have another opportunity before the next council meeting to get this to you without a special council meeting, so that's why it was presented in this manner and added as an item.
Would it be in order to find out now if we're, if we're thinking about a table, would there be enough interest in the council for everyone?
If everybody, city, well, remember too. Yes.
Absolutely.
I intend on being out of town at that time, unfortunately.
Officer Hatley, you would like to go? Okay, you'll be attending?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Thompson, will you be attending?
I'm confirmed.
Okay. Mayor Reynolds, will you be attending?
Absolutely.
Councilperson Goodson, will you be attending?
And yes.
Okay.
Now, just a reminder, March 31st is the South Side Revitalization Meeting from 3 to 5.
Okay. So we'll have to tell West to make sure to get us out of there at least, at the latest, by 5:30, so we can make our way out there. Okay. And councilperson Pittman?
One.
You'll be going? Okay. So I'm gonna, one, two, three, four, five, times, that's eight, nine, so I'd need two tables. I'm not gonna count, councilperson Smith, because I believe that since he is going to be putting on the event, that he's probably already included.
But is why?
Well, I imagine they're probably gonna cover her too, but we'll make sure, you know, because as it looks right now, we'd need to purchase two tables.
My neighbor would like to come.
I'd like, I would like city staff to, like our department heads to be able to attend if that's their desire.
You're in his pot?
I don't care. If we're buying eight or two, and that's eight, that's six.
Let's round it off.
And I'm not gonna be there, so there's two seats.
Well, and I think that if we buy two tables, there'll be seven vacancies, so we will have enough to ensure, and I think that Dawn and Ruth and Mr. Belsa and.
Amy.
Would love to be there.
So all motion that we buy two tables for the chamber dinner.
I second that.
Councilmember Hatley?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith has recused himself. Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yeses and one recused.
Where are you going?
Okay, with that, we will move on to reports, discussions, correspondence, council announcements and reports, please. Councilmember Smith.
All right.
I couldn't help.
Okay. So I just want to remind everyone that this Saturday at our brand-new convention center, if you haven't had an opportunity to see the million-plus, how many dollars have we spent on that?
We're at, what, about 1.2 now, Dawn?
1.3-ish.
Yeah, that looks great in there. YMCA, of course, occupies a building most of the time, and when they're not in there and we're doing something like this, it's the convention center. I was corrected on that the other day. Nevertheless, I just want to point out, from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00, there will be many presentations, the mayor will be there presenting, I believe.
Like M-A-N-Y or M-I-N-I? Like they're little presentations, or there's a lot of them?
There's, there are many presentations.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What was the word?
It's like donuts, mini donuts or mini donuts. I mean, what do you have, small donuts or large donuts?
Very small presentations.
I was just giving him a hard time.
Size, scope, yes, right. So anyway, I just want to encourage the public to come out to that. We are going out to all the schools, letting them know to come and support this. Forty-three years is a Tree City USA, it's a prestigious honor of our community, so I just want to remind everyone of that wonderful event. And then the same day on Saturday, the Exchange Club, they're gonna have their talent show, and so anyway, you can still sign up for that, I believe, but it's at the State Theater starting at 6:00. That's a great Orville event, so I just want to remind everyone of that. And then April 2nd, Wildflower and Nature Festival, which is at Riverbend Park, and it, I understand that every slot is sold out, so it's gonna have a lot of vendors, a lot of vendors will be there. It's just gonna be a great day to celebrate, you know, the wildflowers and all things nature at Riverbend Park, April 2nd. It's a free event, as is the Arbor Day event, and the Exchange Club, I believe it's $5 a person or $10 for a family, is that right, Bill?
Please, sir.
Yeah.
Which one?
For the 6:00, for the.
Five a person.
Yeah, five or 10 a family, yeah, five a person, $10 a family. So just great, great Orville events, that would be wonderful to see you all out there supporting our beautiful community.
Thank you.
You can announce your dinner?
The chamber dinner?
That would be self-serving, so, no pun intended.
Councilmember Riggs?
Well, I've heard that there's also a chamber dinner coming up on March 31st, and I assume you could purchase a ticket or tables from the chamber's website or in person right next door.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I had opportunity to address Rotary Club yesterday with the State of the City speech, and it was a really good time, I really enjoyed that club. And so I just want to say that it was well-received, the city is in excellent condition. So thank you, staff, and councilmembers. Moving on to future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public speaker on this item, Bill Spear.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor? Yeah, I would ask that we bring up for future agenda, our agreement with the Business Improvement District for downtown. I've recently been going there with some complaints, and they were unable to answer them, they have no staff, and during my time in their meetings, I've come up with a whole bunch more complaints, that I think that it would be important for an information for the city to, to actually see what's been going on there. For the basic business principles, they never did file their nonprofit, and they've also haven't been paying their taxes. For someone that pays into that fund, you know, I would expect that they would have all their business principles in order. They have no, they have no books, there needs to be an audit of them, their board has not been doing its job, because on a board, you should be making sure that these basic things are taken care of. And also, you know, where's the money at? They should have a thing, we spent, like, you know, the, the city says this money was spent here, this was spent here, and for the grants they got, you know, I would like, as someone that pays into that, to know where the money that I put in went, and if they're spending the money that they get on the grants in the right place where they're supposed to spend it. Right now, you know, there's rumors going around, I don't know if anybody in the, in the city councils heard it, but, you know, I never heard it till I went, till I went there. But I think it's important that we get all the information out there, because it makes our, our city look bad, since you guys are the ones, the city collects the money from the, from the business owners. There should be a way for the city to have oversight on it, to have an audit. I personally would like to, if there was a way to opt out, or at least for it to be fixed and run correctly. My complaint was being on the outskirts, paying into it, and it's like we get skipped over, forgotten, left out, and I've complained about it, and, and there's no way to get a cure there. Again, there's no staff, the first thing that you should do is hire staff and have someone that you can hold accountable, someone that you can fire, but you gotta have your books in order, you gotta have your nonprofit, or you gotta pay your taxes, however it is, those are things you have to do. And I just would like it to be brought up and looked over by the city, and let the public see what's going on, and see how we can get that fixed. Thank you.
Time.
Mr. Legron?
I will look into this, Mr. Mayor, and get with Mr. Huber, and see what, if any, regulatory authority we have over the BID, and we'll figure something out, whether it's gonna be a presentation where, you know, the council can hear an update on what's going on, and the grievances can be expressed by those that are not happy with the situation, and then we'll update you on what we can or can't do. I mean, I'm not 100% familiar with the regulatory authority, if any, the council has over this issue.
I know that when we agreed to collect for this entity, it was as a courtesy, recognizing that we didn't have authority, collection authority, or, or any other.
I'd have to, yeah, we have to go back and read the ordinance and see what, if any, if anything's in there, refamiliarize myself with that.
There has to be some sort of, Pastor Bear is correct, there has to be some sort of oversight, so I'm in agreement with that. I would agree with that being on the.
We'll start looking at it, and we'll get some sort of answer back for you.
Thank you.
As the council member assigned to that, I'm happy to assist in any way possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Administration reports, Mr. Legron.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to update the council on the status of the Orville Fire to Cal Fire transition that is currently occurring. Currently, what is, where we're at with that is, we have two processes to complete, to complete that transaction. The first one is to complete the transitional MOU with the OFFA. A lot of that work has been done, the OFFA being the Orville Firefighters Association. A lot of that work has been done, and we have a couple of really critical things that we need to wrap up, and once we get those wrapped up, that transitional MOU will be complete. That is anticipated to be done somewhere toward the end of this month, between the 23rd and the 25th, I believe we're meeting with them again, our negotiator will be there. The other issue that we have is the final approval from the LAFCO process. Been in contact with LAFCO, LAFCO has told me that they believe this will be on their April meeting, in the beginning of April, so we'll have the final approval from LAFCO to proceed forward with that. About two weeks ago, we did receive a notice from the state that there has been a rate increase. That increase took our all-in cost overall from 4.2 million to 4.8 million for service. The reason for the rate increase the state provided was that the benefit cost has increased from 67% to 94%. That accounts for our top-end cost. What that means, just so everyone understands and I'm clear, is that the state bills or gives estimates of cost at the highest possible rate, meaning that if we have three people working there, everybody at their maximum earning rate, that's what they would give us the estimate at. What we actually pay is what our actuals are, so, which means that the hours that are worked will be billed for those rates at the rate at which the person is earning in the job. So 4.8 is your maximum all-in cost, so there has been an increase. That is the bad news that came a few weeks ago.
Thank you. Chief Tens? Mr. Belsa?
Good evening. I'd just like to update you guys on our staffing. We held oral boards today, and we're at four code enforcement technicians, and based on the oral boards and how the results today, we should be at full staffing within the next month. We found two, I believe, really good candidates that care about the city and meet the criteria of the work ethic and the heart for the city that we look for in code enforcement technicians. I'd also like to let you know, there was approximately 90 businesses that were out of compliance with their business licenses, and we've been working diligently on those for the last couple months, and we have everybody in compliance now. They're either in the process of licensing, or they have paid their past license due in their current. couple months, and we have everybody in compliance now. They're either in the process of licensing, or they have paid their past license due and their current licensing. And then our, I've been training our code enforcement technicians to keep an eye out for construction that was going on without a permit. Since November twenty-sixth, to date, we have over fifty stop-work notices on contractors that were doing construction in the city limits without permits. And the importance behind that is to understand that when individuals are out re-roofing houses, doing electrical plumbing, grading, that it's done right. Whoever ends up in that home doesn't end up with issues. And it should also be noted that when those individuals are caught doing construction without permit, they do pay double fees in, in a way to deter that type of future behavior. And again, this last month, we abated over seventy AVA cars in the city of Orville. That is a, is a huge program. It's very important to us and very important to the city, and it's an easy way to alleviate blight, you know, without getting involved too deep in the, in the legal mess of things. So I just wanted to report that to you guys.
Thank you. Ruth?
I wanted to let you know that I'm going to be bringing more software requests to you on the next meeting. So a part of our transparency software that we have already purchased and we're working on getting going, there's a component for internal users that is not outward to the public for all of the city staff to log in and collaborate and work on the budget together. So we have never been able to do that. I thought this was an excellent opportunity, because we have the local recovery funds that we need to spend, and so this is an appropriate expenditure of it. I thought we could try it. If it, if it doesn't work out, we could abandon it, but I was in a manager's, a leadership meeting this morning, and I floated it out, and everybody was really supportive of this idea, and they all thought it would be a great idea. I wanted to use it. So I'm gonna bring, bringing another staff report to you, asking for a new software that would could possibly make our life a lot easier around the budget.
Thank you. Dawn?
Two quick items. Caltrans has issued the encroachment permit for the Maverick Fueling Station. They met on-site yesterday for the pre-construction meeting, and they will commence construction in two weeks. Also, our Parks Department has been installing drought-tolerant landscape at various locations. The first location is at Myers and Mitchell in that triangle. The next location to receive this drought-tolerant landscaping will be at La Palma at the most, or the center landscape strip. So as these various locations come up, you'll see new landscaping. So some of what you'll see is crushed granite with boulder croppings and then carpet roses they've installed, which will add a pop of color against the crushed granite. It'll be a nice appeal with low water usage.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for clarity, to touch on the Mavericks' encroachment permit, just so everybody understands that neither the council nor the mayor or anybody else stopped that project from up there, from fixing the roads or anything like that. That is considered, that's State Route one sixty-two. It's a state highway. It requires Caltrans approval to work on it. So what's been the holdup on that is getting Caltrans to approve the project and authorize the work to be done. So it isn't that the city didn't want it done, or the council didn't want it done, or any other thing that you might have heard. The reality is, is it's a state highway that requires state approval. So just when we talk about an encroachment, that means that they are going to be working at, near, or on the roadway, so they have to get that approval from Caltrans. So that's kind of just what's taken so long. I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
One of the first things I learned when I got elected was if you want to go from being part of the solution to being part of the problem, just get elected. Councilmember Smith, you wish to comment?
Yeah, I was gonna actually ask Dawn to break that down, but just for, I guess, additional clarity, because some people may not know what encroachment permit means. So, and I've got a lot of complaints at my office next door over this, so, and so the public is really crystal clear that Mavericks, it faces the one sixty-two, and then you have the on-ramp to northbound, and that's just a mess out there. And everyone's asking, why isn't the driveway fixed? What's going on? The road's a mess. And the reason for that, we've been waiting on Caltrans.
Correct.
Bottom line. I mean, they're the sole responsible party that's held that up, so that the public is really clear. It's not us, it's not Mavericks' fault, it's Caltrans. Throw them under the bus just for a moment. We do want to play nice with Caltrans.
Yes, I mean, and I think that you're going to be very happy with some news that's coming out of Caltrans regarding the on-ramps and the off-ramps on State Route seventy to one sixty-two in Montgomery. Dawn will be bringing that back at the next meeting to show you some slides and pictures of some improvements that are going to be going on in that area for beautification purposes, so. And it's gonna be all done on Caltrans' dollar. So, and Vice Mayor Thompson, the permit is in and working through the approval process for the wall on Table Mountain. So, you know, before you are done here, in the next four years, we, we will break ground on that wall. We have not forgotten.
Yeah, quick question on the Wonderland Motel site. It's great to see it all cleaned up. Is there plan to use part of the old building, I assume, walls and that, and then build a new motel, or have they submitted anything else?
The which location? I'm sorry.
The motel.
Oh, down on Feather River Boulevard, yes. They are planning to rebuild it as it was, so that's why they left the remaining shell, that first floor standing, because they would like to utilize that shell, but it'll be built back as it was.
Okay.
Councilman Pittman, the reason why nobody knew what that was is because the Wonderland Motel is an old, I knew what you were talking about, but a lot of people don't, so. The budget in.
Budget in, yes.
Ron knows where the Wonderland is at. He's been there, stayed there.
So, Ms. Bergstrom, you're a department head now. Do you have any reports?
I have any reports, but I would like to thank administration and you all for the opportunity to serve the city of Orville in a different capacity. Thank you. Well, pretty much the same capacity, but continue.
Thank you. Well, I think each and every one of us are amazed every day at, at the hard work you do and, and the diligence and, and accuracy in which you do it. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will adjourn until April fifth, twenty twenty-two at four P.M.